Good evening, everyone. I call the council to order for our regular meeting for this evening, January the 24th. We'll start with an invocation given by Pastor Kirk Callpepper, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, and I'll ask City Council to stand, and then after the invocation, if the audience will stand for the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
Good evening. Starting off with, I have some sad news. The sheriff's office lost one of its active auxiliary deputies. Deputy Roscoe Andrew Strickland passed away this week, and they will be mourning his loss in a graveside service tomorrow, so I will be including him in the invocation. Let us pray. Most holy and glorious Lord God, the great designer of the universe, the giver of all good gifts and graces, you have promised where three or more gathered in your name, you will bid in the midst of them and bless them. We give thanks this evening for the day we have collectively shared, and now for this time of assemblage to do our city's business. We give thanks for the public safety officers with us this evening that we are giving lifesaving awards to, and for all of their colleagues that are called to serve us in their various capacities. And God, our Father, we thank you for Deputy Roscoe Strickland, who served the city and served us well, and who now his account rests with you. We also thank you for this elected council and mayor and the work they have promised to do for us to advance this fine old city. Most importantly this evening, we pray that this meeting, which is begun in an orderly fashion, be conducted in peace and closed in harmony. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, we'll have our roll call electronic if you'll signify
by your presence by voting yes. Are we good?
Yes, sir.
Before you, we have three sets of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of January the 10th, 2017, the meetings of a regular meeting, January the 10th, 2017, and a call meeting of January 17th, 2017. The chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Move adoption.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favors, please signify by voting electronically. Motion carried. This brings us to presentations, and we have a very special presentation tonight, and I'll ask our sheriff, the Honorable Bill Watson, to come to the lectern, please. And if you'll explain what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I love calling you Mayor, I tell you. If I turn around and speak to the --
Sure.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. What we have tonight is a special presentation. We have three lifesaving awards that we want to give out. I was looking to see if Daniel Brown had come in yet. She's been caught in traffic, but she was a deputy at the time this occurred. She's now a police officer with the Portsmouth Police Department. Chief, have you seen Daniel yet? Mayor, could we postpone this for just a few minutes until she gets here, if you don't mind?
I'll exercise the great power, and we'll postpone it.
You know, I hate to do it without having her present to receive her award.
Yeah, please.
If you don't mind.
Don't mind at all.
Thank you, Mayor.
In fact, we'll rearrange the agenda so it's at the end.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your patience, you and the council. Thank you very much. Huh? Is she coming? There she is, okay, we can do it.
I'll retract everything I said.
Fantastic. Okay, Doug. If Chief Chapman, please step up here with me. Okay, on the night of November 3rd, 2016, while working part-time job in London Oak Section of the city, Sergeant Faze and Deputy Brown, which is now Officer Brown, saw what appeared to be an assault in progress. As they approached, they saw a male subject stabbing a female victim. They drew their weapons and confronted the suspect and took him into custody. Had it not been for their actions, the female victim would have died from the stabbing assault. And it's my pleasure, Chief, if you'd like to hand this to your officer. Treason? Thank you very much. Just want to let you all know, we're out there, okay? Sometimes people wonder, but hey, just because you don't see us don't mean we're not there. But it's always been a joint effort between the sheriff's office and the police department. We try to work hand in hand. In fact, a lot of times when people retire from the police department, the first thing they do, they pack across the street right to the sheriff's office so I can hire them. And our next recipient, which is Randy Cummings, he was a former Portsmouth police officer, and he retired with about 20 or 25 years, and he came in, been here almost 15 years now. Randy, would you come forward, please? Okay, on the night of October 25th, I mean, excuse me, on October 25th, 2016, at 4:45 PM, Deputy Cummings was picking up his son from an office building in the Western Branch section of Chesapeake. Detective Cummings was off duty, in civilian clothes and driving his personal vehicle. Deputy Cummings heard a gunshot and observed a male chasing a female with a gun drawn, attempting to shoot the female. Deputy Cummings drew his weapon, identified himself as a law enforcement officer, and took the suspect down into custody and turned him over to the Chesapeake Police Department upon their arrival. Deputy Cummings' actions saved the life of the victim. Randy, I'd like to present you. And I've got certificates I'm going to give to each one of them, but I just want to let you all know that we appreciate being out here and the opportunity to serve you all. You know, we are public servants, we take it very seriously, and we love each one of you, and we're going to keep you safe, one way or the other. Thank you very much for your time. Mayor and council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff Watson. Thank you, Sheriff. And thank you for all that serve our city, particularly our public safety and the people that were honored tonight. Thank you for responding first to duty, but doing it in a way that you save the lives of others. No greater love. Let's go now. We now go to our agenda. Item 17-54, the adoption of ordinance to amend the city code. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. Ordinance to amend Article 3 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, 2006, Officers and Employees Generally by amending and reordaining Section 2-112 annual leave and Section 2-113 sick leave to reflect the accrual of certain types of leave on a pay period rather than monthly basis, and to make certain additional modifications.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, you've heard the reading of the caption. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Please adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we're now open for discussion. Hearing none. We're ready to vote. All in favor of the motion, which is to adopt the ordinance, please vote yes electronically. And the motion carries 7-0. The next item is Item 17-55, which is the adoption of an ordinance to amend the city code, or the city's classification and pay plan. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the City of Portsmouth Classification and Pay Plan for FY 2017 to approve payment of a conditional, one-time, $1,000 stipend to eligible sworn employees, paramedics, and dispatchers in the Police Department and the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the clerk read the caption of the ordinance so that we can get it on the floor for discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. It's ready for discussion, and we do have a citizen that has signed up to speak. We'll hear the citizen first and then council. Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. Sir, if you'll come to the lectern, you have five minutes. Oh, before, Madam Clerk, sir, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to have the clerk read the protocol for speakers.
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your indulgence. The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of Council, and fellow citizens. In looking over this proposal, I'm reminded of the Beatles lyric from back in the Ice Age. "I don't care too much for money, money can't buy me love." And it can't buy you loyalty, and it can't buy you a lot of other things. I recognize that there has been a serious retention problem, not only among our first responders, but on a broader scale, across the Commonwealth and throughout the nation. But I'm not sure that what is proposed here is the best way to address it. I have some technical issues with the way this will be implemented, but let me talk on a broader scale. One of the problems in terms of retention is asking people to do too much. And it's ironic, because the kinds of people who become first responders are ones who are willing to give their all for all of us, but to ask them to give their all without adequate support is unconscionable. And by adequate support, I mean adequate levels of staffing so that people don't have to work overtime endlessly and exhaust themselves. Exhaustion leads to errors of judgment, it leads to health issues, and I believe that our current levels of staffing for our first responders are inadequate. So, more than trying to give people a bonus and saying, yes, we appreciate what you do, now go back out there and work yourselves to death some more, we should be looking at eliminating the staffing scarcity that we have among first responders. And I'm not the person to determine how many police officers, how many firefighters, how many paramedics we need to operate at peak levels. You have highly qualified professionals, the chiefs of the departments, who can make that determination. But I disagree with those who say that adding more staff in those departments isn't going to change the level of public safety. We don't have just one police officer, we don't have just one firefighter, we don't have just one paramedic in the city. So we know that there is some numerical staffing level that will meet the need. The question is, what is it? The evidence suggests that what we have now does not come up to that level. So I want to urge you to go forward and take a good, hard look, and a good listen to what the chiefs have to say about optimal staffing levels. I think that will help us to retain more of our qualified, experienced officers. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. It's now time for council to discuss this, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to make a comment that I am delighted that the manager included the 911 operators, dispatchers in this. This is the first time in my memory that we have included dispatch in something like this, and we all know they are the backbone. Without the dispatchers, the policemen and firemen wouldn't know where to go. So I am delighted that we have included them in this bonus opportunity.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I guess this is for the city manager. I noticed the list of employees that will be receiving the bonus. What employees within fire and police will not be receiving the bonus, or stipend?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, all the sworn officers in both fire and police, which are public safety, and the dispatchers are receiving the bonus.
Right, so which ones are not receiving the bonus?
I'm trying to... Oh, you're speaking of the civilians who are not the sworn. The civilian personnel who are in the police department will not be receiving the public safety stipend.
Right. Any particular reason why those groups were left out?
When we're looking at where we are addressing public safety and the challenges of retaining public safety, it's our sworn fire, police, and dispatchers of where we are having, I would say, the disparity of recruitment and retention.
Okay. Also, there was language in which I believe if any of these persons separated from the city, sometime, I think that date was June 30th, that they would have to refund the stipend.
Yes, that is a stipulation that has been placed on the stipend.
Okay, because if it's a bonus or stipend, I thought that was for past performance and rewarding them for their past performance. So why would you penalize for future performance?
It's a stabilization stipend, and I'm not, or did not describe it, as a bonus. The fire, police, dispatchers received a bonus in December, but this is a stabilization stipend.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor will vote electronically, signify by voting yes. The motion carries 7-0. This brings us to our next item, Item 17-56, and that is the adoption of ordinance accepting a particular grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for police youth projects in the amount of $18,000 through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund equipment, uniforms, and referees for the Police Athletic League.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, to get this before us for discussion, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Move for adoption.
We have a --
Second.
And a second. Did you get that?
Yes, sir.
And we have no registered speakers. Discussion. Hearing none. Will vote on the question, all in favor signify by voting electronically yes. The motion carries 7-0, which brings us to the next item, which is 17-57, which is the adoption of another ordinance accepting another grant. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for recruitment, hiring, and the amount of $18,000 through the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to fund recruiting activities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You've heard the caption of the ordinance read. In order to get this before us, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, adopt the ordinance discussion. Hearing none. The chair will call for the question. All in favor, vote electronically yes. And the motion carries 7-0, which brings us to Item 17-58, which is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a certain agreement. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution unconditionally authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver a post-2018 use and support agreement with the Southeastern Public Service Authority for the use and support of a regional solid waste disposal system.
Thank you. And to get this before us, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt, and it's seconded, and we do have one speaker, and I'll call that speaker to the lectern, Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. Again, sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening again. I have been very involved with this issue over the past year, and I've watched this go through a number of phases, and my concern at this phase is not that the city contemplates entering into the use and support agreement. The previous council had already made that determination, for what I consider good and appropriate reasons, even though it was not the path that I would have preferred. We did not get a full inquiry into the other possibilities because of a glitch within the current ordinance for procurement, and I want to urge you once again to examine that procurement ordinance so that in the future, the public and the people who apply when an RFP is issued get a reasonable explanation of why something is not in the public interest. To me, the public is best equipped to determine what is or is not in the public interest, but that's water under the bridge right now. My concern at this juncture is the previous agreement that council had approved relative to the use and support resolution was that it was conditioned upon SIPSA providing us an allowance for a transfer station, which we do not have. The conversation that took place in a prior work session gave the city manager authorization to have SIPSA negotiate for us with Wheelabrader to use the Wheelabrader facility as our transfer station. However, that issue has not been decided, and in the event that no arrangement with Wheelabrader can be made, we're still left with a need for a transfer station. To adopt this resolution at this point in time with no guarantee as to how our waste will be transferred from city trucks to SIPSA trucks, I'm not comfortable leaving that piece open, because we're talking about a $5 to $6 million facility that has to be in place if no arrangement can be made with Wheelabrader. So I would like to know how council proposes to deal with that open issue. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir.
And thank you, sir. It's now ready for discussion by council. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, I have a serious concern that I expressed before about the arrangement, and I just want to make sure that legally we get an interpretation from our city attorney on what was explained so that the citizens will have a little more information. And that is, for our city attorney, it was explained to council that Wheelabrader, the Wheelabrader contract cannot be negotiated at this time because we are under contract with SIPSA. Does the SIPSA contract prevent the City of Portsmouth from negotiating with Wheelabrader for post-2018 services? Not for services presently, but for post-2018 services, which we know in 2018 the SIPSA contract will expire.
Mr. City Attorney, if you would address that question.
Dr. Whitaker, I would have to refresh myself with regard to that agreement, but there is, I am familiar with the general parameters with regard to trash issues, and we are limited in terms of our options until post-2018. With regard to the particulars of procuring post-2018 services, we did, in fact, put out an RFP that addressed some of those issues, or was an attempt by council to try to get some insight on those issues. But there are some legitimate limitations on what we do, as long as we are members with SIPSA, which that relationship extends into January, late January of 2018.
Right.
But to go any further, I would have to take a minute to take a look at the specifics of your particular question.
Yeah, well, it's really the issue that management raised at the last discussion of the matter, that we were committed to having SIPSA negotiate this because of our contract with SIPSA. But that's confusing, because we're not trying to negotiate anything within this contract period, we're looking to negotiate after 2018. And I think that we are selling ourselves short to use a third party to negotiate a deal that the city can negotiate itself, and it just seems like that's adding an additional layer that doesn't need to be there, and I just hope that the citizens are aware. The question that was asked, what if SIPSA does not agree to this negotiation, where does that put the city? Are we going to answer that question tonight? Are we going to answer that question tonight?
No, sir. We have a motion before us, which is to adopt this resolution.
Well, let me, let me, let me take the floor again then.
Before you speak, sir, I want to make sure that everybody's had a turn. Any other speakers? You have the floor, sir.
Okay, because if we're not going to address that issue, then I think the citizens need to be aware that if that doesn't happen, then the trash is going to have to be transferred somewhere else, which it may be outside of Portsmouth, which would increase our costs significantly. And so I think that that is something that we need to address prior to even going into this, what our options are. Also, once again, I still feel that, based on what city attorney just said, that there are no limitations preventing us from negotiating with Wheelabrader at this time. And also, given the per tonnage cost that was given to us at our last meeting, our past negotiations with SIPSA, allowing them to negotiate for us has not fared well for the taxpayers. We ended up paying more.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Ready for the question, all in favor, vote electronically, yes. The motion carries six one. Please, if you will, not display any emotion. This brings us to our next item of business, which is seventeen fifty-nine, which is boards and commissions. Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Members of Council, I'd like to propose the following appointments.
Motion.
Yes, motion. For reappointment to the American Disability Commission, Tanya Jones, Nancy Grisham, Lois Richoff, and Dr. Jaclyn Walker. Downtown Design Committee, Tanmisha Anthony, Rebecca Lars, Dawn Richardson. To the Economic Development Authority, Dean Thomason, and Julius Thompson II. To the Planning Commission, Elana Thomas. To the Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission, Vanchetta Kudusso. To the Supplement Retirement Board, Laura Bylin. Those are reappointments. I also like to motion for appointment to the American Dis- Do you want to do that first?
Yes, let's take the reappointments as one motion.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion for the reappointments of the people just read by Vice Mayor Cherry. It says second, any discussion? Please, we're ready for the question, please vote electronically. Motion carried. Now, the Chair will recognize Vice Mayor Cherry for new appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion for appointment to the American Disability Commission, Lisa Kidd and G. Quince. To Behavior Healthcare Services Advisory Board, Reverend Milton Blunt. To the Board of Building Codes and Appeals, Raymond Wilkins. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Elliot Moody. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, Amanda Winchester. To the History Commission, Donna Si. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Sally Grant DeVernuti, and David Stevenson. To the Housing Board and Justice Affairs Appeals, Betty Norman. To the Library Board, Deborah Hines. To the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Angela Robertson. And finally, to the Newport Development Authority, Davy Smith II and Bryant Thomas.
Is there a second to the motion for these-
I want one additional, ma'am.
PRH.
To the Portman Redevelopment Housing Authority, Sonia Chapman.
Second.
You've heard the day.
Oh, wait, I haven't finished.
Okay. Sorry.
To the Social Services Advisory Commission, Janine Taylor Smith and Latoya Parker. To the Tyree Community College Board, Leanne Clements and Paulette Franklin Jenkins. Now I'm finished, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Cherry and a second by Councilman Moody, and that's to appoint the people that have been read by Vice Mayor Cherry to the Boards and Commissions so cited. Are you ready for the question? If you are, please vote electronically, vote yes. Motion is adopted, seven zero. Thank you. Which brings us to item seventeen sixty, item submitted by council members. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Simmons.
Yes, sir. This is the time I usually talk about arts events, but I have a much more serious matter tonight to share with the public. And I'm going to read this so I don't get it wrong. This is a, an alert from Terry Davis from the Norfolk Naval Shipyard. This is announcing that once again this year, the Norfolk Naval Shipyard will conduct exercise Solid Curtain Citadel Shield 2017 from January 30th through February 10th. This is a two-part linked anti-terrorism force protection exercise conducted by Commander U.S. Fleet Forces Command and Commander Navy Installations Command on all Continental United States Navy installations. The annual exercise is designed to enhance the readiness of the Navy Security Forces and ensure seamless interoperability among the Command's other services and agency partners. This exercise is not in response to any specific threat, but a regularly scheduled exercise. Measures have been taken to minimize disruptions within local communities and to normal base operations, but there will be times when the exercise causes increased traffic around their bases or delays in base access. Area residents may also see or hear security activities associated with the exercise. Advanced coordination has taken place with their local law enforcement and first responders. So this is from January 30th through February 10th. This will affect areas around the Norfolk Naval Shipyard and Naval Medical Center, Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you have the floor. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, last night at our public work session, we got an update on the waste disposal, and in particular, there was a discussion on RDS. I think our citizens know that the way our trash is collected, we have the black trashcans, we have the blue trashcans that are for recyclables, and then we have the items that are placed along the curve. My question is, for those items that are picked up by RDS, last night in our discussion, it was presented to council that when the recyclables go over to RDS, that we rely on their data, and then I assume they send us a bill for the tonnage that we've dropped off at RDS. I would like to find out, how is it that it is reconciled that what is actually being dumped, we are being charged for? And also, in addition to that, I thought the whole recycling program was to extend, one of the goals was to extend the life of our landfill out at Crane Island. If there has been no scale at Crane Island, then how is it that we know how much trucks have been bringing to dump into Crane Island and therefore compromising the useful life of our landfill? I'm asking that because we're in the budget season, and if we don't have adequate procedures or staffing in place, then once again, our citizens are paying more for service than they need to, and also, there's no significant monitoring going on. I think the fact that we have within our budget the need to purchase a weigh-in scale raises a lot of serious concerns as to what was going on at Crane Island, because if you have no weigh-in scale, and there were limitations on how much trucks could bring into Crane Island, then how were we monitoring that? And what I was told last night, as far as RDS is concerned, is that we send inspectors over there, but the inspectors are not there 24 hours and at every dump. And so we are relying on a third party report, which is a cost, and then also, we are potentially limiting the useful life of our landfill. And I think, I think council, as we enter to our budget discussion, need to seriously look at this whole RDS and how that whole waste and recyclables. Also, why are we paying them when we already allow them to take our recyclables? Which means if they're taking our recyclables, they can sell it and make money off of it, which is the intention. So therefore, why is the city and citizens, why are we paying them when they're already making a profit off of our recyclables? And so if there's no objection from council, I think we need to seriously have a discussion on that as we look at these fees that we're incurring and passing on to our citizens.
Thank you, sir. With concurrence of city council, we'll ask the City Manager to give us a report at the next meeting, if you'll send it out in writing before the next meeting on these three questions. Thank you. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind citizens that we have a council retreat coming up February the 3rd and 4th. That will be in Wakefield, at the Wakefield Airfield Conference Center. I think the time, the start time on Friday is 10:00 a.m. The City Manager has made me aware that there are hotel rooms available there, I think at $85 a night on a first come, first served basis. The retreat on Saturday begins at 8:30, but if you can make it, certainly be glad to have everybody attend. Also, on January the 26th, as in this coming Thursday, the Portsmouth Police Department is having a blood drive at the Training Center, which is 309 Columbia Street. I understand that's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So if you haven't given blood in some time, be a good opportunity to pay a visit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any further items? Hearing none, we'll go to item seventeen sixty-one, which is Report on Pending Items. And Madam Clerk, do we have any reports?
No, sir, not that I'm aware.
Thank you. Next agenda item is item seventeen sixty-two, which is Non-Agenda Speakers. And our first speaker is Barry Randall. Yes, sir, you have the floor, and you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Members of City Council, Dr. Patton. I'm here tonight with some residents that are still staying in the hotel from Swanson Home. Here it is, October. I mean, it started in October, here it is, February, going into February, we're January, almost four months out. Out of respect for you and my love for you, Mayor Rowe, I will do as you said at the community meeting out in Churchland and not make this personal, so I will not call Councilman Whitaker's name. However, what I passed up before you guys is something that you all need to see that breaks my heart, and this young lady right here, she's eating cups of chili because she doesn't have a stove to cook on, and it's been about four or five months. She's been charged rent, abandoned at the houses that they condemned, that she has to pay rent, and they don't, they'll go to court. But yet, I don't understand how they feel that these individuals can afford to pay rent in the condemned houses, stay in the hotel, and buy food every single day just for their family to eat. I don't know if the Board of PRHA is incompetent or incapable, but I just find it odd because we have a certain said council member who talks about how he speaks for the needs of the people, and then we have citizens that come up here and repeat the same foolishness, where I brought a face here tonight because I want to know when if this certain said council member is going to speak for their behalf, because again, we're going into February. They've spent Thanksgiving, Christmas, and gonna spend Valentine's Day in the hotel. Her children are now having behavior issues at school. They're staying in one room. So if you say, well, you have to pay rent because your name is still on the lease, well, where you pay rent at? You have bathroom, you have kitchen, you have more than one bedroom, you have a front room. But here at this hotel, this is all they have. And I just find it strange because if, I believe, Ms. Pam Clope, has she still been with PRHA, or Ms. Kathy Warren has still been with PRHA, and you see these beautiful black and brown and moka faces, we will have a certain said council member who will be screaming racism and saying that you have white people in charge that are not looking out for our people. And this gets black people upset at home. Well, we have black people in charge, and we have black people suffering. And I'm going to relinquish my last two minutes to this young lady who's living in a hotel. Her name is Romika Murphy.
Yes, hello, council. Well, I'm here tonight to speak for not only myself, but the residents of Swanson Homes. We know it was an act of Mother Nature, but it's not fair that we've been staying in the hotel since October and paying rent and gas. And if we don't pay, they threaten to take us to court. I mean, I'm spending money, fifty, sixty dollars every day for food to feed my kids because I don't have a stove to cook on, and it's not right. It's not right. It's not fair what they doing. They not give us no information. We don't know what's going on. I ride out there, ain't nobody working on the houses, no contractors, nobody.
Nothing.
Nothing. It's we in the dark on everything right now, and we just want to know something. I mean, when are we going back home? Because that's what we can afford, so that's what we want to go back to.
And PRHA still has properties-
Right.
-available. Why haven't they used Hamilton Place, or, I mean, we're going to just be honest, just tell the truth. We don't want the people from Swanson Home moving into the newer PRHA properties. I mean, what is really the problem? I don't understand. Those of you all know that I suffered a house fire, and because of comfort and the love of family and friends, I stayed in the Marriott for two weeks, and there, and I was uncomfortable. So if I was uncomfortable in the Marriott, how do you think these ladies feel out in motels?
Right. My name is Daphne Byrne, I'm a CNA, and I live out of Swanson. And I got two kids, grandkids. I got cussed at, and they still holding my furniture there. We can't go in, get nothing, and I'm still paying rent and gas. And it's not fair whatsoever, none.
But we have people saying they advocate for these individuals. I have in October, November, I'm looking at old council tape, and I'll be the first to apologize. I'm looking for old council tapes to hear people speak on these individuals' behalf, but let you all, you know, spread the lie, Barry Randall doing it for politics. I was doing this before I ever decided to run for anything.
Just not fair.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel for these ladies, and I think this is terrible that they're raising families in hotel rooms. I don't know if there's anybody here that could give us, I don't expect anybody to give them an immediate answer right this minute, but I'd be curious to know how many residents are still in hotel rooms and when we expect them to get into some more substantial housing, if not tonight, tomorrow.
Good. With concurrence of council, we'll ask the City Manager to gather that information from the appropriate official at Housing Authority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also extend my sympathy to the ladies who are still living in hotels, and as your council liaison to the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, I promise to be an advocate for you in any of the issues that you're facing. And I know that one of the young ladies may have- And I know that one of the young ladies may have contacted my cellphone. I recently got it in January and didn't realize that I had not set up my voicemail. So I recently was able to do that. So I am a contact for you. So as I get information from the board that I serve on with the Portsmouth redevelopment Housing Authority, you can contact me directly to make sure that your needs are getting addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with a housing question, I would question, we need to look into why are they having to pay utilities when they're not there? I heard one of the speakers say that she's having to pay her gas bill. I don't know about light bills, what are they going on? But I noticed that we have the interim director, Ms. Brown, in the audience. She may be able to answer some of the housing questions, if you would see fit.
I understand your point, and she is here. Are you prepared to address this issue tonight? Would you? I'll ask you to come to the lecterns.
There were a number of issues brought up. The first thing is, the families are currently living in public housing, and under federal regulations, they can only go back to public housing. And some of the sites that were mentioned are not low-income public housing sites. So we can't transfer them there. That's under federal regulations. That's the first thing. Secondly, yes, I apologize for people still being in hotels. We had 66 units that were affected. Right now, we have 28 residents that are still in hotels. By the first of the month, we should be down to 11. And those 11 families are being transferred to an extended stay, so that they will have refrigerator stoves and those kinds of things that they're missing at this point. As far as saying there's nothing that's been done, that's not true. We have had a contractor who's been working there to remediate, because the first thing is to remediate. There was asbestos in the units on the floors, to secure the tiles. That created another layer of work that needed to be done. The contractor just finished up, taking out all of the dry walls, the floors, the cabinets, and all the things that were affected, that needed to come out of there. We had, we've had one contractor that has gone in there to give us pricing, because they couldn't go in before that, to give us a price of what it's going to cost to rehab those units and bring them back on. We are, we've got another contractor that's going in this week to give us a price. We're hiring more than one contractor to do the rehab, because we're trying to speed that up, to get those families back into their units. We anticipate within the next 30 days, if not shorter, that those 11 families that are left will be back into their units. As far as, there is going to be a meeting that's scheduled for next week, I think it's the 30th or the 31st, to talk with the remaining families that are in the hotels. Let me talk about the holidays, because we had great concerns and compassion about the fact that they were there. We provided turkeys to, and turkey dinners to everybody that was there at Swanson. I personally hired a cook that catered all, for catered dinners, Thanksgiving dinners, for every family that was in the, at the hotels. We've had several Christmas parties and stuff to help with the children, because we know that they had lost a lot of their stuff. I'm going to repeat the fact that we are landlords. We have tried to tell people that they needed to get flood insurance or insurance on their units. Some did, some didn't. But FEMA came in, and on average, each family received $5,000 from FEMA to help replace the stuff that they lost in their units. So they weren't totally, you know, without some help from somebody. But it's not our responsibility. We are landlords, and we're only supposed to supply housing. I had, as far as paying rent, HUD requires that they pay rent. They have a lease. I understand they're not in their unit, but we are paying far more than what they're giving us to stay in a hotel. We could have taken the position that some other cities have taken, when they've had these kind of catastrophes, and locked the doors and said, you're on your own. We didn't do that. We found, we found hotel rooms to put the, to put the people in. As far as utilities, there is, there is connected to their units, some of their units, utilities. But if they're not in the unit, then there should not be any utilities. Everything is not, and there's nothing running in the units. They're not there. As far as their stuff being still there, yes, some of the families, the, if they had an upstairs unit, we have sort of like quarantined their stuff. The company has gone in and cleaned it, because some of the, some of the stuff could be cleaned. What could not be cleaned had to be destroyed. The stuff that was good, their belongings that were good, in some cases, it's been, category list has been put together of what's in the unit, and has been stored somewhere safely, until we're able to get them back into their units. And I wrote myself a note to make sure that I would send Dr. Patton an update, a written update of what's going on. And we do, we've been, we've been having meetings with the contractor that's doing the remediation and taking everything out every Monday. Now that he's finished, we are working on, and I will be able to tell you more when we will actually start rehabbing those units.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Cherry, you have the floor.
Ms. Brown?
Mrs. Brown.
You answered most of my questions, but, but you said that the estimated date for all of them, what, did you say the end of the month?
We're hoping to have the 11 families back into their units by the end of February.
In the February. And I guess the other question was about the communication with the meeting. Is there, because I believe most of the worst problems are solved with good communication. Is there any communication with them in between the meetings? Because a couple of them said they hadn't heard anything, and how do you, how do you all do that?
Yeah, we have been trying to communicate with the residents that are in the hotels. We send notices, written notices. We haven't had a group meeting in a while. So I had, in fact, I had told them that we needed to schedule something, and something is going out, telling them that we're going to meet with them next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Deborah Nipper. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Deborah Holland Nipper. I live at 4821 Thornwood Street. For 36 years, we've been there. I was born and raised in Portsmouth, graduated at Wilson High School, class of 66, and retired in naval warfare system, civil service. I'm a senior citizen. I live on the corner of Thornwood Street and Colonial Lane, and have a neighbor that parks his vehicles in front of my house, and on the side, which I pay taxes for and I must maintain. He's killing the grass, tearing it up, until mud is kicking up in deep ruts. He doesn't park his vehicles in his front yard. There's none there. And at a minimum, there's none to two in his own driveway. He moves all these vehicles every three days and alternates where he parks, where he parks them back, so he doesn't get towed. He has now torn up a minimum of four yards. These vehicles are parked one to three houses down the street from his house. He has seven vehicles, including two in backyard, two motorcycles, one boat, two trailers for two people. If he can afford taxes, tags, and insurance on all of these vehicles, more power to him. But when he targets my space to park them, it affects me. He continues this destruction of property and harassment until it's affecting our quality of life. If we have to get no parking signs until this issue is resolved, we are amicable to this. Don't wait too long, or we won't have any dirt left. Public Works had to fix another neighbor's yard twice last week, brought out dirt and fixed it. And by Friday night, he tore it up again. If this area is accidentally torn up in my front yard, because we have narrow streets, no curbs or gutters, or my family and friends mess it up a little, I have no problem fixing it myself. Not happy, but I fix it. On the other hand, if someone blatantly tears my yard off, then he has overstepped a boundary. We are having safety concerns. These cars are parked where they block the view around a curve in my yard on a corner. It is difficult to see getting out of my driveway, much less when my grandchildren ride their bikes. The view is blocked. And this is also a school bus stop. We fear someone can hide in behind, behind these vehicles and assault us as we come home, especially at night. I had one neighbor hiding in her garage, and she motioned to me to come here. So I come over there, she's also our senior citizen, and she said, she was so sorry. You know, it's a visual thing. She hugged me, and she said, she saw where he is now parking three of his vehicles, and she had tears in her eyes. You can't tell me this is not visual harassment, and without even the destruction of property. I told this neighbor, she shouldn't let him see, see us or the other neighbors talking to her, because they would be targeted next. We are now living in fear. We're told, and that they believe that the neighbor has guns. It's its own right, if he wasn't on probation for beating a neighbor with an extension cord, which he received 12 months for, and served a minimum of three days. All we want is for him to park his vehicles in his yard, in his driveway, or in his front yard, follow the law, and stop harassing this neighborhood. And he's also shining the brightest floodlight you've ever seen, shining directly in his next-door neighbor's bedroom, and their little children's bedroom. We also believe there is a mental health issue, and he needs help. But we're not doctors. These actions and numerous others speak volumes for this person. If there is no resolution soon, our next stop will have to be the news media. This issue is costing the city in manpower, whether it is the police or Public Works. Resolution, please. This is now escalating, and it's just a sampling of what's going on. Scary, it's becoming a powder keg. Don't get me wrong, I love my neighborhood, with a few exceptions, this being one. And I love my city of Portsmouth. In the past, I've said Portsmouth is a secret, many don't realize, except for a few bad areas. We have hoped to dispel the mindset of others about Portsmouth. Of all the officers that have responded, and we appreciate all of them, the most helpful, genuine, and confident was Officer Whisher. We're giving him an extra thumbs up, and thank you.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay. But we need, we need some help.
Thank you. And Dr. Patton, if you could have somebody get her contact information, and if you will look into it and give us a report.
I have some pictures if you need.
If you'll give, okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Tiffany Neal. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
I can do this. I teach fifth grade, I can do this, right? If I can survive that. Okay. My name is Tiffany Neal, resident of Colonial Lane in the Cavalier Forest neighborhood of Portsmouth. I've lived in this city for nearly 10 years, my husband for 12. I've been an elementary school teacher for 13, and a mom of two young boys. I am here tonight to bring to light the events and issues we're experiencing in our section of this normally and historically very quiet neighborhood. I am hopeful that bringing these issues to light, and you having a face to attach to the issues, and not just documentation funneling through city offices, will lead to some kind of expedited action and resolutions to our concerns. For the last seven months, we have been attempting to deal with a neighbor that has no regard for city or personal property. Daily, this neighbor parks three to four vehicles on our already narrow street, and leaves them for days. It isn't until the tires are finally marked that he will move these vehicles. As is stated in the city ordinance for excessive parking, he will come out and roll them forward or switch them around, but essentially put them all back in front of everyone else's home. This behavior has turned, has in turn destroyed the easement in front of our home, as well as our neighbors, but we are expected to maintain it. We have sought help from the police, as well as multiple city offices and officials in trying to keep our yards and property from further destruction, and keep our streets safe for cars and pedestrians, to the state he has not been stopped. This same neighbor is actively tearing up property and making the street unsafe for vehicles and pedestrian travel, whom we also have a protective order against. He continues to harass our family in other ways, as well as the rest of our neighbors. Most of what he seems to be doing does not seem to be deemed not necessarily illegal, or in violation of an ordinance due to outdated or loose interpretation of unclear city codes. Floodlights have been reoriented to be aimed directly in my six-year-old's bedroom window, but because the city ordinance, on exterior lighting exempts neighborhood lighting, he doesn't have to, and he will refuse to move them after being asked multiple times by police officers. We are also actively harassed at all hours of the night by making his unreasonable loud noises, and we are having issues getting the city noise ordinances to be actually enforced. The city noise ordinance states that from 10:00 to 6:00, 10:00 p.m., 6:00 a.m., noise levels cannot exceed 55 decibels, and our neighbor repeatedly behaves in a way that violates this. However, the police department does not have the equipment. They are not all receiving decibel sound meters to alleviate the issue. Our children have been woken up multiple times between the hours of 10:00 and 1:00, by motorcycles, loud singing, vehicles banging, repeated banging of the house and the doors, and the barking of many dogs. My husband and I have more or less been forced to regularly sleep on the couch at the other end of the house, as sleep is difficult, if not impossible. This continued violation of our right to live in a reasonable peace in our home, while not receiving adequate and timely support from the city, is beginning to seriously affect our overall quality of life. We have spent countless hours on the phone, speaking to each and seemingly every city department, oftentimes being transferred from one to the other, only to find ordinances that sometimes authorize, but definitely support the continued harassment and destruction of property, which is affecting everyone in our street. We're very worried and fear for the safety and health of our family and our surrounding neighbors, because of the continued allowance of this neighbor to behave and act out towards us in these ways. We also worry about what may ensue, due to people being frustrated, harassed, being repeatedly told that an option would be to move from our homes. And we are now being told by the police that they have been directed not to react or pursue the continued and blatant violations of ordinances. It seems as though the longer these issues are allowed to continue without resolution, the more someone is liable. The city will eventually have to assume both legal and financial responsibility, as we're seeing, and experiencing major health impacts and a lot of undue stress, all related to the continued harassment, overall lack of transparency from the city, and a slow reaction. We are desperately trying to shield our kids from this insanity and the reality of what is going on. It is very hard to keep telling a six-year-old why he cannot ride his newfound skill on his bike, or cross the street to visit with our other neighbors, because it is a very unpredictable and unsafe environment. And this is all because of one individual. Please help us not only close loopholes in the current city ordinances that are allowing these behaviors and actions to disturb our lives, but also so that we can get back to the peaceful, respectful, and law-abiding life that we had. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Patton, would you make sure that we have her contact information? I think this is related to the first, of course.
I do.
Our next speaker is Aubrey Holland. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, council. I'm going to be redundant. I'm going to give you a little background on myself. My name is Aubrey Holland, I live at 4808 Colonial Lane. I was born 74 years ago in Portsmouth. I graduated from Woodrow Wilson, class of 68 and a half. Except for the time served on active duty in the Marine Corps, I have lived my entire life in Portsmouth. I have resided at the same address for 44 years. This is a nice, quiet neighborhood, which is comprised of good, hard-working people and retirees. I retired from the Portsmouth Fire Department in 1992, with 28 years' service. There is grass, this is going to get to the crux of it, there is a grass-covered easement between the drainage ditch and the street, which I have maintained for 44 years. For most of the year, the city easement becomes a soft, spongy substance, that if anyone parks or pulls in front of the deep ruts are created, which looks awful and make it impossible to move. I have, I have repaired the ruts by impossible to move. I have, I have repaired the ruts by buying, uh, bags of topsoil and smoothing it out countless times for 44 years. I am no longer able to repair it due to breathing conditions, heart conditions, and other health conditions. It's sad to say, you get to that age. There is a related issue that I and my neighbors need help from the city to do and resolving. There is one resident who regularly parks his fleet of four, five, six, I don't know how many vehicles in front of our houses. And it's not so bad, but he digs in. He cuts another rut, uh, often getting stuck, creating a pigsty in front of your house. Can you imagine all mud where you've been working hard to grow St. Augustine grass? Meanwhile, his driveway easement, more than often than not, remains free of vehicles. This resident is obviously very calculating, knows exactly what he is doing and what he can get away with. After shuffling his vehicles around, which he moves because it's gonna be towed after a certain number of days, and they have been towed from time to time, uh, to be, uh, to avoid being towed, he looks you in the eye and laughs in an antagonizing way, which really gets my heart to flutter. The police have been called many times. They come and do a good job, but they cannot do but so much. It seems that their hands are tied. There is one family in particular that just spoke to you, has been the target of his harassment in countless ways over the 12 years he has lived there. There are young children in this family with spotlight shining in their windows every night with noise issues on some nights that awaken them at night. These events have escalated in the past few weeks, and there are more families targeted for the behavior he creates further and further on down the street. It's extended around now to Thornwood Street. We need help from the city through application of city ordinance and untie the hands of our police department to save this one peaceful neighborhood and prevent any other escalation of this unproven harassment. We would appreciate your attention and efforts to help in resolving this increasingly unsettled situation. And I had a bad, uh, run in with him Friday night. It almost escalated to something else, but I tried to get a hold of myself because I was, I'm 74 and I, I can't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Holland.
Thank you for your time.
If you would give your contact information to Ms., uh, you have it. Okay. And again, the city manager will look into this. Uh, the next speaker is Scott Pauly. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, I don't know if I can approach, but I've got some photos. Got about four sets. I'm Scott Pauly. I live at 4805 Colonial Lane. I'm probably the third, fourth family strictly involved with this situation. I know it's been a long day for all of you. I'm probably the least put-together speaker that's been up here from Colonial and Thornburg, and I'll try to make it quick. I'm not gonna reiterate some of the things already gone over. We're simply asking for your help. Uh, if you check back on the call records of the police department, probably since June, it'd be a, a very good estimate to say the police have probably been called 30 to 40 times. Uh, this gentleman is unrelentless. Uh, he is unforgiving. He's unwavering where he does nothing but harass and poke at you. Standing here looking at each of you, I know for a fact that if you were subjected to this type of behavior, I'm thinking there would be a different outcome right now. We've been subject, subjected to this way too long. We are asking this council to look at your ordinance concerning, um, the easement and parking and put some meat into something where, hey, if somebody's parking there, I have no beef with anybody parking there. I have a problem when that person's intent, and this is of my opinion, is of ill will and malice to destroy my property just to get at me. If you look at the last picture, and I'll hold this one up real quick. This is my easement. I had great grass up until June. The city's been out there. I've put out dirt. I've put out seed. I rake it. I pat it down. I've had my vehicles stuck there before. I'm not talking about that. If my neighbor was to get stuck there, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about this one individual's mission to drive us crazy and to harass us. You know, guys, I, I just wanna live in peace and harmony. I was brought up by my parents to respect my neighbor, to respect the authority, to mind the four corners of my property and keep my nose clean. This guy's making it impossible. You know, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the fact that you asked the city manager to look in this. We don't have 30 days. We really don't. And I don't know when the next meeting is, because this is my first meeting with, with the attending here. But I will say this, we've already had an assault. People's tensions are at the brink. Something's gonna give. And it's a crying shame. Forty, fifty times we've asked the police, hey, please help us. We're asking for your help. We're asking for your intervention and nothing is happening. And then we just heard the other day, we've been told to cease and desist. What else do we have? So this gentleman's gonna continue to poke and probe, and then something's gonna happen, and then one day, somebody who's on the innocent side that's asked for help so long is gonna be on the short end of the stick and they will have no problem locking them up. Guys, we're asking for you to intervene. We're asking for your help. We're asking you to look at this ordinance. We're asking you to look at the parking policy. We're asking you to look at the easement. If this is my property, I should have some inherent right to that property. The city easement is for you to come in there and put in a ditch, a curb, you know, put up a fence, whatever, without a discretion. That's my property. He's not just parking there. If you look at the one picture, you'll see a bunch of cut-ins at the opposite side of his driveway. He'll back out, pull up, back at an angle, look at you and laugh, and then sink it in the ditch. You know, this is what I'm talking about. I've got video that I'd be glad to share with anybody that shows him backing up a house and one and a half, half length, sorry, one and a half house lengths back to line himself, come up to my property at a crawl, get right beside my mailbox, and gun it into my easement. He's collapsing the ditches. The city came out there the other day and they repaired the whole thing. Is it Dorothy, is that what I mean? With Public Utilities, Public Works? She deserves a merit badge because I'm gonna tell you one thing, she's been stellar. Uh, city manager, Mr. Mayor, you've had a lot of police officers out there. I've met an awful lot of them. I didn't realize you had so many, but it seems like every other night we see a new face. Then we have to explain the situation again. But I will tell you, your force is doing a great job, but they say, hey, our hands are tied. There's nothing we can do. If you don't help us, I don't know where it's gonna go. And there's so much going on. Any of these pictures, I've got a copy right here. I can explain it. This gentleman will take his vehicles and put it in front of your house and to claim a larger footprint, he'll put down those tailgates on his truck. You can't put out refuge in front of your house because he's gonna put all his vehicles in front of your house. And then when they come by and mark the tires like they said before, he'll move this vehicle.
Sir, your time has expired.
I hope you heard me.
Thank you, sir. And again, uh, Madam City Manager, you'll look into this properly and give us a report.
Yes, Mayor, and members of city council, we will look into this, look at the noise, easement, parking, uh, and other issues that are relating to it, get a full report very quickly and be able to get back with you and address for our citizens the concerns that they have.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Thornton. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Michael Thornton and I reside in the Brighton community. And yes, listening to what they say, I agree. We need to like do more, like build more curbs and guttering. And it sounds like they need a parking garage somewhere nearby for all these cars. All right. But I'm gonna go read this speech out prepared. Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and taking an interest in our community. I've come here to protect our First Amendment rights by practicing my First Amendment rights. I have the right to speak about what I want to speak about. I can always file a lawsuit if my First Amendment right gets violated. I wanna speak about something that really bugs me. Lawsuits. Lawsuits are the latest craze. Much like the California gold rush of 1848, the Portsmouth lawsuit rush has attracted droves of eager prospectors greedy for free gold. It seems like every time improvements are made, that saboteurs bust onto the scene to gum up the works. The lawsuit has enabled many a sly fox to embezzle ludicrous amounts of money from the taxpayers. When used correctly, a lawsuit ultimately empowers everybody. When the power to file lawsuits is abused, lawsuits become just another technique unproductive individuals use to steal from the hardworking people doing all the work. We should be aware of the examples we are setting for younger generations. Some threaten people with guns, others threaten people with lawsuits. Burglars and robbers are products of their environment who tragically acquired hostility, cynical philosophies, and poor work ethics from watching the actions of the elders and leaders in their community. In a capitalistic, free-market society, we're only required to pay people for their work, not their egos. Extravagant multimillion-dollar donations of taxpayer money should be voted on by the people. There are many better ways to responsibly spend that kind of money. There are also better ways to waste it. I'm disgusted that a certain individual with a reputation for serving our city is attempting to use that reputation to extort absurd amounts of money from the taxpayers. We shouldn't allow frivolous lawsuits to undermine the effective governing of the people's Portsmouth. How many Dr. Evils attempt to hold our local economies hostage? I'm delighted that another bad old boy lost his job. Like Dark Helmet said, keep firing 300. Making America Great Again begins with making Portsmouth great. Portsmouth already has great people. Lord, let your sleeping giant rise and catch the demons by surprise. Show enough. All right, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Lorenzo Waters. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lorenzo Waters from the Kevlar Mountain section of Portsmouth. Um, I heard the vote that was taken on 1758, and my question is, why didn't this city of Portsmouth negotiate this for themselves? Why didn't you have to go to a third party instead of doing it for yourselves? And going with what we, what we, what y'all voted on, there is a possibility that the refuge that we have on our water bill, there is a possibility that that will go up, not only once, but a possibility of twice. And, uh, I was wondering if the taxpayers are aware of that. And I'm wondering, is the council aware, aware of that? That that refuge, that refuge bill will go up, not only once, but a possibility of two times it may go up. And if I'm not mistaken, um, I think the refuge there is rated around $66 and some change. And, uh, my question is just, why didn't this city negotiate for yourselves? And, um, the other thing, at the meeting on January the 10th, there was a question raised about the liaison for the PHRA. And I was wondering if that was done under the procedure that the city council is supposed to follow. Because if I'm not mistaken, Dr. Whitaker had the floor, and, uh, he asked you, Mayor, was this going to be voted on? And you told him no. And as he was talking, Councilman Moody had, I guess he had beeped in to take the floor. And you had caught, you had cut, you had cut Dr. Whitaker off and gave Councilman Bill Moody the floor. And he made a motion on this same thing that you said it will not be voted on. And the motion was carried, was carried. And y'all turned, the council turned around and voted on the same thing that you said will not be voted on. And I'm just wondering if this was done according to the procedure that the city council is supposed to follow. And this is all I have.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is William Peacock. Sir, you have five minutes.
I feel like I've gone to the emergency room and all I had was a broken leg listening to the people tonight. It's got a heck of a lot more things to discuss than I have. Uh, I have some copies. Um, since I've retired, I've, uh, had a lot of time to sit around and talk with people and try to resolve problems. And, uh, one of them has caused a lot of trouble with everybody is these tunnels and the tolls on the tunnels. I'd like to make a suggestion that we negotiate with ERC to allow four free one-way trips a week for everyone going through the tunnels. That's two round trips a week that could be used any day of the week, Monday through Sunday. The four trips a week could be, could not be accumulated. You either use all four free one-way trips in that week or you lose them. ERC wants everyone to have an EZ Pass. Make it a stipulation, you must have an EZ Pass to receive your four free trips a week through the tunnels. Receiving these four free passes through the tunnels would be a tremendous incentive for people to be more inclined to purchase an EZ Pass. ERC has not given any leniency at all concerning tunnel tolls. As a matter of fact, ERC has just made a big increase in the tolls. Who would the four free passes benefit? All of our military personnel stationed in the Hampton Roads area, whom without, the entire Hampton Roads would be turned into a ghost town. This would be such a tremendous help for the senior citizens, having doctor's appointments on either side of the river. Cancer treatments. It always seems that you have a doctor, you gotta go see him in Virginia Beach, and you take your radiation treatments for cancer in Portsmouth. So you're going back and forth. Visits for family on either side of the river to see loved ones in the hospital. Family members on either side of the river or from out of town coming to see off are Greek military personnel in the Hampton Roads area. These four free trips through the tunnels a week would sure help bring people back to Portsmouth, to sightsee, bring their children to the museums, and spend money in Portsmouth shops and stores. This sure wouldn't break ERC. They just wouldn't be making every dime possible they could be making off of the working man, every dime they could make possible off any and all seniors, and every dime they could make possible off our military personnel. In return, ERC would be giving something back to the Hampton Roads area instead of constantly taking away from the working man. The senior citizens and our military personnel stationed here, our city of Portsmouth, which the tunnel tolls have devastated, would definitely prosper also. And again, like I say, I, I feel like I came to the emergency room with a broken leg. And again, like I say, I feel like I came to the emergency room with a broken leg, listening to these people here tonight. I haven't been able to make council meetings in a while due to some health issues. I feel more proud of the council we have now, city manager, newly-elected council personnel. Some of you I know personally. I've talked to several of you personally on the phone. Ms. Burke, I worked with your mother in the shipyard. I know she's very proud of you, young lady.
Yes, she is.
I ask y'all one thing. Talk to each other and listen to each other. The scrambling that's going on from one individual to another needs to stop. You're not helping anybody. And God for sake, help these people that need help, that don't have a place to live, and the people that are having problems with neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And sir, you have five minutes, and the floor is yours. You have five minutes, and the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, administrators. I was born 1929.
Mr. Crump, can someone adjust the?
1929, the same year that Dr. Martin Luther King was born. I've been following his journey ever since Montgomery divorced, bus boycott in Montgomery, Alabama, to Memphis, Tennessee, when he was down there trying to help the garbage workers. During this period of his life, I never saw him and others of his group sit down in a meeting with predominantly white politician groups and develop strategies to destroy the progress that African-Americans have made in this country relative to economics, social progress, in jobs, politics, racial pride, and racial equality. Yet I saw African-American ministers and others sitting around a table with now-elect President Donald Trump, making strategies, who is a bigot, sexual deviant, refused to rent to African-Americans, and scam artists during the aforementioned things in 2016. What is so disturbing, Dr. King, Meghan Everidge, and others, lost their lives trying to secure justice for us. It appears we are going backwards by the actions of some of us who I've referred to at times as judices for personal gain. Locally in Portsmouth, we have African-American ministers and business persons, civic leaders, who have collaborated with predominantly white organizations and the Virginia Pollak to bring down Mayor Wright. I believe it was simply because he was, as they say, too black. Notwithstanding the fact he brought down, he brought business to the city, he had a great bond rating, and money in reserve. I feel he did, he didn't have any personal indiscretions. He had a good family, and yet he was not afforded his rights relative to the First, relative to the First and the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. These guarantee a person the right to freedom of speech and equal justice under the law. Further, I can see this evil and unjust thing is happening again to Dr. Whitaker, being bought on by the way the council responds to him when he voices his concerns about the business of the city, of the city. Maybe he is also too black for some of us. I must say here, Dr. Whitaker has the same right as any, as a despicable character such as President Donald J. Trump and anyone else. I feel he has done what any good citizen would do, and that is fight for the city's side businesses, businesses for African-Americans and other minorities, and request that there be a study to determine the fairness of the city and other things. Finally, Dr. Whitaker is guaranteeing his rights under the Constitution, under the amendments aforementioned as other citizens. I hope we all respect that right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our business tonight, and the meeting is adjourned.